Ready. The June 26, 2025 special meeting of the Malibu City Council is now called for order. Public comment will be limited to items on the agenda if you would like to speak. Please submit your request to speak form to the clerk. May we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Conrad?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Councilmember Yuri?
Here.
Mayor Protem Silverstein?
Here.
Mayor Brigets?
Here.
You have a form.
Great. Ryan, will you lead us in the Budget of Allegiance place?
Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we please have a report on the post on the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted June 24, 2025.
May we please have an approval of the agenda?
I'm moved to approve. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? So we are going to start our strategic planning workshop. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, we have two speakers. The first speaker is Adriana and the second speaker is Luis Pena.
Followed by Ryan Henry.
Adriana, if you want to stand up and make your comments, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Ariana. I'm the Vice President of Malibu Film Society. On behalf of the Malibu Film Society, we really appreciate the opportunity to present our proposal to renovate the Civic Theater here at City Hall. And all of this has been shared with both the mayor and Mayor Protem, along with the Arts Commission. We are aware of the city's plans to build a permanent art center. The amount of time needed to construct this facility leaves a gap in our community and no place to gather support for the arts. Renovating the Civic Theater is something that can happen in a matter of months, benefiting local residents as soon as possible, which is especially important as our community continues to recover. In your packets, please look at page 1A. Here are the current building plans as supplied by the city. It's a flat floor space with 162 permanent seats, 122 of which are in the center section in the front of the stage. When needed, AV removable chairs can be set up in the open area between the front row and the stage. This room can be used as is for small-scale stage performances, dance concerts, and lectures. We've been using it for special events like film-based seminars, documentaries, and lectures, but it can't be used for pre-release or first-run movies. Anyone who is seated off to the sides would have a dark and distorted view of the screen and the audio would be muffled and muddy unless we remove the surround sound system. No studio will accept these conditions for a film they want to show for Academy Awards consideration. Please turn the page to 1B. All of these problems can be fixed by straightening the backs and side walls and extending the left and right walls all the way to the front of the room. That alone will free up hundreds of square feet, which can then be reallocated as office space or other use. Removing the old soundboard and extending the center section to the front of the stage will add 60 permanent seats with space for up to six wheelchairs. There's even enough room to add a center aisle along with a new 28-foot screen on the back wall. The Film Society is willing to provide an industry-compliant digital cinema projector and surround sound system as required by the studios. That system can also be used for digital scenic projection for stage productions and other events. This is a project which can be done relatively quickly with a minimal disruption to regular operations at City Hall and can be done at a relatively modest cost. We've had two separate ballpark estimates of around $1 million. Please look at page 2A. We've also been asked if stadium seating can be added, and the short answer is yes, but it would cost a lot more and take a lot more time. If desired, this can be considered later as Phase 2, which is on page 2B. We strongly urge you to request a staff report to consider this proposal so that you can better understand the potential costs, benefits, and concerns involved. And I just do want to add that we've had several events in Malibu, specifically at ALO. We've been doing dinner and movie nights. And I know that people think that movie theaters are obsolete and unnecessary, but everyone has been beyond sold out. We've done the same in Calabasas, having to bring chairs into the theater. So the demand is here and the community really wants it. Thank you.
Please.
Hi, council. And I have three ideas and asks for you, and I hope this is the right time to do. So number one is circling back to what was the strategic plan as approved back in December. I heard from the community development, really was the manager Patricia, that priority number two was to implement direct technologies, have a nice digital ecosystem at the city to help process everything much better, payments, documents, submissions, as a local architect that would just save time to everybody. And I know that because of the Franklin fire, this was postponed. So I was wondering if now it looks like the staff is in a good position right now. We've had six months after the fires. We've had time to re-staff and retrain. Maybe it's a nice opportunity to maybe pull up some of that stuff and try to focus on implementing this. So this is a question. Is something that is still on your plan or not? And what level of priority we have right there? Then, number two, one thing that residents, planning commissioners, design professionals, a city council agrees on is that the code is very difficult and is very discretionary. So we all use as an excuse why we have the problems that we have. Have we ever tried to fix it? I know that it takes time. It requires planning, long-term planning. Why don't we start right now? That way, the next fire, next catastrophe, we will be better prepared. It's a manner of identity for Malibu, and I understand that, but now we have a lot of good technology that can help us. Why don't we sit down and try to work on this? I've discussed this with several planning commissioners. They think that this could take up to four years. It's a head lift. There's a high risk that we open the door to worse things, but I think that if we don't risk, we don't win. And I would like you guys to discuss about this too. And then number three, if you're going to be discussing about how to use the land that the city has, as you know, I come from Europe and it's very common to throw architectural competitions open. There's architects around the world that have really good ideas, and I'm sure that that could be a nice starting point for you. You can make it as ambiguous and open as you want, and then maybe you receive ideas that we're not thinking about that are great. That's it.
Thank you.
Ryan, you're our final speaker.
I wanted to say this is your first meeting since the fires. So the residents who suffered fire burnouts have had to switch gears and prioritize for their families, rebuilding efforts, relocation efforts, going through financial issues. That's exactly what the city of Malibu has to do as well. The infrastructure of the city crumbled. Pacific Coast Highway and the cellular system. And now we've got a lighting system and electrical distribution system problems. And we've always had the limitation of an aged-out, undersized water main running the entire length of the city. And that 30-inch main has cracked, left the city without water for three days in 1999. And there was no other emergency. It just cracked on its own. So we're 30 years past due for a big earthquake. This is going to be a real big problem, and the city's infrastructure needs to be assessed now. You need to hire a specific engineering company to come out and do these three functions. The vulnerability assessment of the water supply to this city, water level management in the water tanks up in the hills. This has to be done independent from the water district. We can't just take their word for it from now on. Look what they've gotten us. They said the water main and the system need to be replaced in 2014 for $240 million, $250 million. Well, that was 10 years ago. Still needs to be replaced, even more so now. Second, the cellular communication system along Pacific Coast Highway will be extremely important for all the rebuilding efforts. And now that the poles are being undergrounded, they can't just add to any pole. It's going to have to be figured out what the spacing's going to be. And these need to be integrated into the new street bike poles that will be erected so that they are not visually obstructive, minimal, and they can be closely spaced if necessary to give flawless coverage from here throughout the city limits. That needs to be accomplished. And the city will need to probably hire an expert to do that because there really isn't enough time to do it. You've got enough on your plate. These things need to be done. I think they're eligible for reimbursements. And water supply, communications, undergrounding the electric, and that includes undergrounding electric and communications up in the Big Rock neighborhood as well. So please see to doing that. And as far as converting this building, this used to be a theater. And I don't see Pam Milik here, but she says we'll regret someday taking out the last three rows of those seats and turning it into a hallway to a department. Well, I guess we're back at the table again figuring out how we can do it.
And that concludes public comment.
Thank you. Okay. So what are our next steps?
Is that a reference to me, Madam Ben?
I believe so, yes.
Am I the next step? I like that.
I'm looking to our city clerk to give you the answer.
Yes. Public comment included the calls to order. We can proceed with the workup.
Thank you.
Well, it's good to be with you. For those of you who don't remember me, Jerry Preciado, I know the council is, but I don't remember all of your names. So just the ones that, I'm sorry to single you out, but.
Susan Boyes, I'm the Director of Public Safety.
Thank you. I do appreciate that.
Kristin Riesko, who serves as Director.
Thank you, Kristin. I recognize your face, but didn't remember your name.
Yolanda Bondi, Community Development Director.
Yolanda, I did remember your name. Right.
Rob Bode, Polycourse Director.
That's right. Appreciate that. Anybody else I feel like I know in the room? So it's good to be with you. I was grateful for the opportunity. We had to spend some time together yesterday with the council and work with you. I'm even more grateful for the one-on-one time that each of you gave me, Mary Ann, Alan, Doug, Steve, and Bruce. I know you're all busy. I know you have things to do. I know how much time you devote to this elected position you hold. You still make time for me. You were very candid. I don't feel like anyone was holding back. I don't think Steve ever holds back. So it was very nice to have that candor. I'm sorry, Mary Ann, would you?
Well, I was just going to ask, I don't, are we, I don't have copies of the current strategic plan. Is it possible to get a future copy of that? Or is, are we going to go in a new direction?
If we need copies, but I think we kind of have a broader vision.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We don't have to rely on, last year when I was with you, on the second day I was with you, we went over with Steve, Joe, and Alexis, you know, the projects, right? We had our directors speak to the projects that they were working on, and the council was deciding on which ones we still want to do. And our director-level folks were telling us, well, we're almost done with this one, so we can move that one off the list, et cetera. Today is more traditional strategic planning. How do we leverage our governance team and our city leadership to focus on the things we need to focus on? This is going to sound terrible. And Anne's recording me, and I hope this doesn't come out the wrong way, which is that just for a minute, just for one minute, right? I just want to put a pin in all the hard work that everybody in this room has been doing in response to those disasters that hit us and impacted the lives of everybody. And certainly more impactful with some of the things our public speaker today, Ryan, was saying about the infrastructure and other such things. And I want us to be thinking forward, right? We're doing all we can, I believe that, as somebody who's met with all of you. There's no question to me that our five council members are prioritizing our rebuilding needs, trying to streamline that, streamline that, make it as easy as possible for those who need to do it, and that they're being fully supported by the leadership of this city. No question. But when we do strategic planning, the idea is less focused on the past, more focused on our future, right? And so we know with all the talent in this room, all the talent in this city and the people that we represent here, none of us can even change 10 minutes ago, let alone six months ago, a year ago, et cetera. But what we can do is influence the future. We can have an impact on those things that are impacting Malibu on a going-forward basis. And so how do we lay the foundation for a vibrant, sustainable Malibu in 2050 when we're 25 years removed from that? And the way we do that is to compartmentalize from it and everything else say to ourselves, hey, what can we be working on now? Is it infrastructure stuff, right? Is it ensuring that as a city operation, we are fully, I can't really say insulated from, but prepared for cyber attacks, right? Which come more often than we can count anymore. And so we start to look forward, and that's what we want to do. And so we want to start for our purposes today from all of you. And I'm going to do a bit of an order here to it. But remember, we want to stay big picture with the questions that we ask and not get into weeds on this stuff. And one of the first things that I want to ask you is it's in the context of a traditional SWAP analysis. Do you remember that acronym SWAP, right? We've all done it. Strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. We can drill down, time permitting, at the end of how we address those in our current context. But let's focus now, for example. I'd like to start with our elected team, our governance team. Any one of you who wants to go first? What do you see as the strengths of the city of Malibu?
When you say city, do you mean the city's staff and the electeds and the residents?
Yes.
The whole?
The strengths of us represented in this room. Now, we serve everybody in Malibu, businesses, residents, stakeholders, et cetera. But what are the strengths of us as a governance team, as a staff, as our resources, right? As our assets that we have available to us, et cetera? What are those strengths?
I think we care a lot about the city. Whether, whatever our priorities are, if they differ, or our paradigms, I think that we all very invested in the success of the city.
Very good, very good. And my able scribe over here, the very capable Richard, who has excellent handwriting on my dad. I appreciate that. It's going to get worse. It's just the way it works.
Yeah, yeah.
But there it is. Thank you for that. And he'll try to do his best to capture your message because it'll come in eight sentences and he'll have to put it in one short phrase. And so if he doesn't do it justice, you jump in. But I think you did, Helen, on that one. Care about the city and community pride. What else, council members?
I think our vision, the mission statement, the vision statement are very clear about what we want the city to be. There's no guessing. We want to stay rural, non-urban, and we want to keep the open space that we have today in the future. We're not, and I use phrase I use periodically, we're not deferring development, we're aborting development.
It's very clear. It's very clear. I agree. All right, continuing. And just because you're gone doesn't mean you can't go again, but I would like everyone to chime in. Steve, you're ready.
I think we've got a community that is resilient, all right? That is willing to come back and do whatever they have to do to get rebuilt. And I think we've got a staff that is experienced. I mean, they've done this with the Willsey fires, so we're getting, we've got a much better chance to help our residents out this time around than when we tried to do it the first time for the Willsey fires. So I think our resilient residents and the staff is trained to be able to help people out.
So resilient residents and then adaptable staff, I think, would go along that line. We know how adaptable you all are because you all pivoted on a dime for the pandemic, right? And you figured out how to do what we do from home for as long as we needed to. And some of my clients are still doing it from home. But you're very good. Resilience and then adaptable staff, very good. Bruce, what comes to mind?
Relatively healthy treasury.
Relatively healthy treasury. That's a big one. That's definitely a strength. Mary Ann, you took that? You took yours?
Verbatim. Why are you thinking like me?
I said it first. I used to think of it like that.
No, what Bruce, what Steve said.
Ah, very good, very good.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I think that.
That's fine. We'll keep opening it up.
I'll have one more. The people in this room. Everyone in this room.
Okay. So it would be.
Executive team?
Executive team. Executive leadership team, very good. That'll absorb governance team as well. Steve, please.
I think we've managed to make good relationships with some of the supervisors, the assembly up in Sacramento. So I think we have built some relationships that will help us as we go forward.
So goodwill with elected officials.
Right.
County, state.
Good relationships, right.
Good relationships which create goodwill, which create results.
Right.
Yeah. Very good. All right. Let me, let me open it up to my senior management team in the room here. What jumps out at you when you say, hey, other than the things that have been said, other strengths are what?
There's a sense of like continuing traditions in a way, like despite community type goes, like, it's a little league parade, you know, and making sure that we're building, we're always have community involved.
Yeah. So embracing traditions and doing that, those are nice. Those are nice things. When we feel like kind of Mayberry, then it's a good thing if they, that's my parrot I'm talking. I still watch that show, I can't sleep at night. I turn on the Andy Griffith Show, especially if I've gone to the movies with my wife and watched something like War of the Worlds. I remember that. We came home, I just watched a little Andy Griffith, so I go to sleep. Kind of thing. Kansas?
I would say active constituency.
Okay.
Because they are very invested in the progress of their city government.
You do not have an apathetic constituency, that's for sure. Something that plagued our nation still does, as you look at voting numbers versus what voting could be in our country, right? There's a lot of apathetic voting base. Overall, I mean, if you look at your voting components as well, that could be some indication of that still. But they're very active, they're very vocal, they're very involved, right? And willing to put in time, I think, many. As I look at your many commissions and other volunteer opportunities, which are quite numerous for a city your size, truly, what else has come to mind on the strengths of Malibu?
I think, I think we have good diversity of perspectives, which I think is really important to have lots of different perspectives, whether it's perspectives from your prior profession, your current profession, how long you've been here, whether you're new to Malibu with fresh eyes or a long-time Malibu. It all helps to get a better view of things.
So diverse perspectives, I do like that. It adds to possibility for alternative solutions or efficiencies. It can create a lot of things when you have a lot of perspectives that way. Kansas, next to your floor, please.
I did, I was going to say our marquee iconic status as a city. I mean, it is known throughout the world. It's a place where many people want to be despite our fires and disasters over and over.
I'd like to be here. Can I just say that and go on the record? Is that inappropriate professionally? I'd like to be here too, you know? It's true. The marquee value of your brand, city of Malibu, it is a brand. I was just asking my wife over the weekend. She says, where are you going this week? And I said, I'll be in Victorville in Malibu. And she said, there's a contrast. Desert of Malibu. And I said, yeah. And I asked her, I said, we have Paris, California, Paris, Texas. We have Paris's all over. Do we have any other Malibus? Anybody aware of another Malibu in the United States?
In Florida.
In Florida? Thank you. Thank you. That makes sense. It's on the coast, all right. Thank you. It's a marquee brand. When we say Malibu, we think you. We think you. And we think of people who look like Malibu Barbie, right? With a car, with a truck, with everything, you know? On all of it. That's what we do. We have this stereotype, right, of it. But it's a positive one. It is. Anybody else on strengths?
I think we understand what we need. We understand what the community need. And so we are able to act on it. You need to know what the problems are and understand the community and the needs in order to provide solution.
Yeah. In my word, that's, he's writing it how you wrote it, how you stated it. But you have your finger on the pulse of this city, right? You really do. And if you don't, they're going to let you know, Yolanda. If you don't, right? And they'll let you know. But that's helpful. Going back to the other strength, an active constituency. Because then there's no surprises. Nobody's pulling the rug out from anybody when you think you're doing great. They're like, no, you're not on it at all. You know. You know you're on it. I like that, Yolanda. I like that. Anything else to add to your strengths?
Well, it's kind of related to a bunch of things. I mean, I think Steve's comment about the strength of relationship with other agencies and regional, that's a really big strength. Something that I think we've all been working on. I think Yolanda's comment was good. But I think one of our strengths too is our relationship with the community. I think that's a big strength and that's something that's unique.
So positive relationship.
Positive relationship. And have that connection with the community. And it's kind of in there, but it's just a little bit more kind of.
Yeah. Because I mean, it's part of this, care about the city. And it can be.
It can be a couple of different things.
Understanding these and the active constituency slash positive relationship. But let's put it down, positive relationship. Because I believe that that is a strength. That is a strength. Is that it? Did we just describe us? Kelsey?
I can come up with one.
Yeah.
I'd say internally, one of our strengths is that we have, our staff has a strong sense of purpose, and that purpose is to serve the city as a whole and not just the mission of their, you know, individual role or department. So we can go all in project.
Shared purpose. By many books that are written on great cultures, one of the three elements that many people identify as great cultures is where we have a shared purpose, right? So that's a big deal. And if that's what's felt here, that we have the shared purpose, that is an indication of something much bigger and stronger. So that's great. That is definitely a strength. A shared purpose. And a shared vulnerability that we all experienced six months ago or so. Am I holding anyone back, am I, on this one? What about, Trevor, you're, I mean, you get to compare cities because, you're the attorney for others, right?
Yep.
And just from your perspective, I'd like to hear, what do you see as the strength of this particular one?
I mean, sort of tied to what Kansas was saying. I think there's a real opportunity for Malibu to lead. You know, people look at, you know, we get attention. We have an opportunity to do things differently. And, you know, people, you know, will follow us. And, you know, we've seen that happen many times, so.
What would that word be? Leaders, trendsetter? It's not trend so much as.
Innovators.
Innovator?
Yeah.
Innovator. What do you want to acknowledge? I mean, that's just part of who you are, right? It happened for a long time.
Sometimes we get picked on because of our name, but we also punch above our weight.
I don't even want to write that one down.
That gets tied into it.
Yeah, it is, um, do you feel picked on because of the name at times?
Like, oh, you're in Malibu, or.
Yes, on a national scale, I realize that.
And also it's also in terms of when we need things.
Right.
Oh, Malibu, don't worry about Malibu.
Bunch of rich people, they work out their water problems, right?
We all, unfortunately, the innovator quality staff, everything else, they'll take care of it, don't worry about it.
We're gonna have to bring that one up on the, on the weaknesses side, right, of things, because maybe they didn't create it, but it is impacting us adversely, right, on that. Any others, before we move away from these strengths, because I mean, that's, those are pretty solid, I mean, we've identified an incredible community that I can tell you with many of the clients that I have, right, as I asked Trevor about it, I can't say a lot of this about a lot of my clients, because they're, they're trying to work through some challenges, right? They don't have the economic resources to be some of these things, or do some of these things, they don't have the community of involved people, right, they're dragging people to town hall stuff and other such things, and so it's different, so this, this is incredible. Do you feel that? I guess that's what I want to help you feel, that both the pride in that this is who we are, and that you helped create this, right, your involvement, you're some fool who helped generate this, and that's a great thing. All right, so from that. With that, let's pivot from, you know, what do we see as strengths, to what do we see as, I don't like to use the word weaknesses, but let's use weaknesses, because that's the tradition, what are areas maybe we need to shore up, let's save that, right, what are areas we need to shore up? Let's start with staff this time, and then we'll go council next.
I would say that we are understaffed and overcommitted.
Understaffed and overcommitted, that is a consultant's worst nightmare, right there. You know, we're more likely to, you know, underpromise and overdeliver, right, that's our goal, this is not a good combo, understaffed and overcommitted, those should probably be two separate ones, Richard. And since this, this is like a brainstorming kind of thing, I'm glad you already know that, and no one's like, well, I'd agree with you, Kansas, because this isn't the time to disagree about strengths and weaknesses, we're just throwing them up there, right? Rest of my senior management folks, Yolanda?
With the location comes the devastation of the different events, and that creates a weakness, not so much because of, like right now, the, the policy is so devastated, and, and so now resources are moving into helping that, that community rebuild.
So is it accessibility a weakness, accessibility to us, or?
No, it's that location that we are, the geography that we are, that we are more prone to disasters. I think to me that is a weakness that we need to recognize, because.
Like vulnerability? Vulnerability to natural disasters.
Yes, yes.
Vulnerability to natural disasters, a step that you think about, but it's a reality.
Didn't you got the word natural?
To disasters. But the only thing we don't have is volcano.
Don't, don't.
Get down, there's a tectonic plate not far away, waiting to go. All right, what else, weaknesses, yes?
Kind of related to that is, again, our location, recruiting really good staff is difficult, because unless you already live in the area, it is difficult to get someone to be able to come here and afford to live within a commutable distance, you know, if someone's coming from somewhere where it's a lot less expensive, and then you're trying to get close to Malibu, that could be a challenge, so, and we see that all the time in recruitment, it's kind of, have to hope that somewhere within our one hour radius, that you'll find good people.
Yeah, that, that is a challenge, is it one hour in the morning you worry about, or one hour in the afternoon? I think, all the above, but one hour in the morning, so that they're getting here would be it, but it's a challenge for recruitment, and I think retention, right, because even if they come here, like, if they need a job, they'll come here, and they may love it here, but they can't handle the commute, and so the next opportunity, they're gonna take that job in Calabasas.
Right, and our commutes are complicated frequently, like, you know, your easy commute for a week could be disrupted by a landslide, now your commute is two hours instead of one hour.
Or major transportation, you're being closed.
Yes.
Yeah, Los, Los Angeles has its challenges for some.
That leads to high turnover.
High turnover, I'll read that for sure. Any other on my staff side?
This may be overcommitted in addition to that, but managing expectations.
Can you drill down a little bit, managing expectations of each other, or of community members?
Community, yeah.
Managing expectations, it could be, but we'll make it separate, right?
Just internally, some of our systems, like, we need to be more digital, more high-tech, I think that would go along with that.
That, that is what we call the low hanging fruit, right? A thing we could change with the resources, with the time to address those, if we're doing still too many things manually in this AI world that we're living in now, it may be time for us to bite the bullet on some things, right, but that's not for our discussion, but just relevant to your comments on that. Very good, anyone else on the staff side on weaknesses? All right, so governance team, right, electeds, what do you think on that, weaknesses? It will not be held against you in the next election to identify what the weaknesses are of Malibu, okay?
Unaffordability for workforce.
Lack of affordability.
Yeah.
I did a quick Zillow check Monday, I think, when I was at the airport, if I wanted to move to Malibu, how much it would cost me for the house I want, it would be about nineteen million, so it's a little pricey for me, it's a little pricey.
I mean, I think they nailed a lot of the obvious stuff, I think the accessibility here leads to staff, I think there's a, I think there's a reputation that Malibu has that works for us and against us, I think that permeates into other areas with staffing, you know, I think PR, we've had some negative PR in the past that we have to work up against, so I think that.
So overall, are you saying reputational challenges?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Because the strength, our marquee brand, can be a weakness as well, it can be both things simultaneous, right?
Yeah.
It can, this great brand, and then all the great envy and jealousy that comes with it, and then, then there's the other part, which is, something happens, and all of a sudden, we get painted with a broad brush, with a lack of empathy that other cities might get.
I think it's misunderstanding the reality and lack of education of what the reality is.
So all of that underreputational, I think, is, is true, yeah.
We've been branded, and it, I think, works against us more than it works for us, seeing it from this lens.
Interesting, yeah. Anything come to mind, Doc?
Yeah, we're a relatively new legal city, but we're an old city when it comes to our infrastructure, which is also unplanned, you look at our water system, for example, or the electrical system, or the road system, all these are cobbled together, so, I don't know how to put that in short phrase, but.
Aging infrastructure.
Yeah, well, it's not just aging, it's, we look at the houses that burned on PCH, some of those houses go back to the forties, some of them even back to the twenties, perhaps, and they're right next to our houses from, you know, twenty twenty. You've got to deal with this interchange of compatibility, noncompatibility, support, non-support, and yes, we're a young city legally, but we're an old city when it comes to infrastructure.
No, I'd say that infrastructure is the, is a challenge, as was brought up earlier as well, right, it is, it is a challenge, and, and you know, that's not unique to Malibu, right, I mean, LA County, I mean, I just remember going back to take care of something in Westwood, my alma mater's there in Westwood, and it was at the same time that a May water break on Sunset Boulevard happened, and it basically flooded all of the Wooden Center, the Wooden Center three-story parking lot underneath it, those things are real, and it was just old age, I believe on that one, that did that.
Have you got one on that?
There's a lot of, there's a lot of deferred, a lot of deferred maintenance that has gone on over the last half century, that need happen handling?
I also think that there should, there could be some more education that would help the residents, and we have a lot of agencies that govern us, and there's a lot of people telling us what we can and cannot do, when we can, where we can, and I think the residents, a lot of the, I would say, maybe from like hostility, or what I feel is misunderstanding what is in the city of Malibu's jurisdiction, what we can control, what we can't control, and I think that it's unfortunate that Malibu becomes sort of a scapegoat in that, or, and the staff feel it, and I feel it, because there's not a lot of education, you know, we became a city in ninety-one, but that doesn't mean we're like independent of all of these other agencies that rule us.
Frustration, jurisdictional confusion.
Jurisdictional confusion, which I come up against myself, whereas.
And frustration of not having the ability to actually.
That's right.
That's a good subside.
Loss of control, we control so little.
That's right, lack of control.
Of our big things.
Yeah, everywhere you look, somebody else has got a finger in our pot, and it's not always great, and that's why I say, you know, what city of Malibu actually does do is really good, it's just that other agencies are making us look bad, because they're not taking as well care of us.
Beaches and harbor.
Beaches and harbor, it's MRC, I know we're being recorded, but it's not fair.
We're also speaking in general terms, right? And there's examples, I'm sure, where they would feel the reverse, right, so just, agency, agency, let's, it can happen anywhere. Steve, anything come to mind on the, the weaknesses side?
And we've got to rebuild a quarter of our, of our city, and we've got to do that, and still be able, in the end, being able to maintain the character that we want for our community. It might be a simpler way to say it, you know, we, we have, we have built ourselves as a rural community, and if we have to rebuild, we gotta make sure somehow when we get to the end of that game, that we haven't really changed the character where we live.
So it's, that's a concern, that's a, possibly a priority, I think it is, looking at your projects, et cetera, and it falls into the category of vulnerability to, to disasters, but I don't know if I'd call that something that is a weakness, or something that needs to be shored up, that, that's something we want, right?
Yeah.
And so, no, it's good.
I mean, that's a high priority.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'd actually call that actually an opportunity.
Yeah, we'll come to opportunity next, opportunity to respond to this and achieve the outcome you just mentioned.
Maybe that's a reactionary problem, like we're understaffed, so we're always reacting, and that would be an area to shore up, how to get less reactionary and more proactive, and get in front of things, which takes time and staff, but that is an area.
So that's, that's definitely one to put on, Richard, we are more reactive than proactive, and there might be a lot of reasons for that, but, I see a lot of heads nodding, that, yeah, I mean, we, we have been a lot more, and then that, there's a number of reasons that could be that we don't need to go into, because you all know them, short staff, da-da-da-da, right demands and everything else, but we're reacting to so much, and it's important for us as leaders to be able to view what's in front of us and anticipate, so that we are ready for twenty fifty, twenty seventy-five, and all that comes our way, right, when it comes down to it. Yes, Steve, you'll still be on the council in twenty fifty, right? All right, Bruce, what's, what's something we need to shore up?
Well, we, we listed as a strength, the cohesion and the vision, I actually think that we have, we lack that cohesion, we, I think the vision is more words than it is action, and it's a very difficult mission, and we're not necessarily united on pursuing it, accomplishing it.
The, what's the phrase there, so the support for the vision, or is it the alliance on the vision isn't as strong as it could be? Are, we're not aligned on what that vision for Malibu is going forward.
Yeah, and that, that, the, the mission and vision that we've articulated are extremely difficult, and under assault by the world, and we don't necessarily have the cohesion and, and forceful wherewithal together to keep, to adhere to what we say we're trying to adhere to.
Definitely something I want to put right there, to have some discussion point or strategic preparation for, that needs to happen. All right, everybody, anything else, I mean, there's things, please, please.
We're a bit schizophrenic also, because a lot of the things that we're seeking to accomplish as a city are not necessarily consistent with our vision and vision.
So, I don't know if we want to put schizophrenic up there, but.
Like conflicting values?
Conflic, yeah, that's a good one.
Conflicting values.
I would say I haven't actually heard or seen a clear vision, except for the mission and vision statement, which we try to uphold, but as far as like the planning or an overarching vision of where we want Malibu to be in the coming five years, I kind of have never seen that. Well, I mean. But I'm new here, I'll be saying that for the next four years.
So I think that's important, right, a, an articulated five-year plan could be a weakness, a lack of articulated five-year plan, maybe.
Well, I mean, I think it's a lack of understanding of the general plan, that the general plan outlines what the founding was on, and how they envisioned it going through, they documented what the city was at that moment in time, and what the striving, and what that plan was to be, so what the city looks like right now is based on what they thought then, and I think there's a lot. Yeah, ninety-one when we became a city, you know, the general plan was done, and it's still, our original general plan is still in effect, and that outlines what existed at that time, and what the intention of the different neighborhoods and zoning were to be for those different, you know, of Malibu at that moment in time, and Malibu in the future, so I think as people, if, as they learn the general plan and read it and everything else, they'll understand if we've stayed with that, or if we have deviated from it.
But you articulated very nicely earlier, right, this idea of being rural, non-urban, I guess was the other phrase, right, the non-urban environment, where was that coming from, I'm just curious, I just want to.
Right, our mission statement.
So we have a mission statement and a vision statement, but it's not clear that we're on the same page about what that means, that's what it sounds like.
I mean, I can speak for myself, I, I think that it's a very loose, it's a broad stroke, right, what, what she might mean, think is rural is not the same as me, and what he might think, so these are very undefined lovely ideas, but drilling it down to like codify it, or to have standards for neighborhood character has been, I think, hard for Malibu, and there was a lot of infighting about it, and I think that's a thing we should shore up as well, if we could, the culture between residents, staff, council.
No, that's very nicely stated.
People living here, people wanting to move here, that they understand what they're moving into.
Right, also educating new residents as to, it's like this constant turnover, and so it's like trying to educate people from New York, like myself, about what Malibu really is from the beginning, versus being angry three years later going, wait a second, but I guess that's my due diligence.
I thought you were a world renowned city, why is it that?
Right, it's all.
My power's going off every three days.
Or how about this, I can't get a cellphone to work at my house, but I don't want to have a cell tower going with this, yeah.
That's schizophrenia. Yeah, there you go, as he stated, there you go. All right, anything else on the shoring upside, before Richard gets off his daze here?
Well, our, our residents also are very entitled, and, I mean, they're, they're active, but they're also entitled, and their expectations are not necessarily realistic.
It definitely has to go on there. That, that has been around since nineteen ninety-one, I'm sure you've had.
How specific do you want us to get with this? Because I got.
Well, this is the time, in my mind.
A list of projects or a list of.
A list of everything, everything.
Well, you got this, we got this too.
Okay, good, great, love a list.
That's enough, just happen to have, what was the last one that came up first?
Oh, oh, entitled to constituency.
Laid bare and not, and not realistic.
Would this also be about business and economics? Thank you.
If it identifies a weakness for us, Malibu.
I can identify, I think that we say that we're small business, we're friendly to small businesses and mom and pops, yet we do not really do anything to help them, but then we have ordinances, it's a little schizophrenic on that front as well, with our businesses and economics.
Thank you, yes. We don't have a commercial tax base.
We don't have a commercial tax base, so it's right.
So, so we say we're friendly to small business, but we're not acting deliberately or intentionally to engage that.
Right, and so then residents get mad, myself, at vacancies, but we do nothing to kind of help people survive here, or open here, and then, and it's already a hard place on your healthiest day to survive in Malibu, because we're a tourism-driven, but we also don't want all of that, so we're kind of like in this strange schizophrenic place, that you need the tourism to survive, but then you don't want the seventeen million.
The one small business you'd definitely support are the tow truck industry.
We actually don't need tourism, we just have.
We have the tourism, we have to kind of figure that out.
And let's define our tourism, our tourism is not resource, this is day tourism.
Yeah, it is day tourism.
Hold it, hold it for instructions, work that versus.
Not, not for discussion, no, that's a question, I mean, what, what does the governance team envision by that, is that okay, well, that's right, that's, that's the kind of tourism that we want to support, or are we looking to, you know, change that over to these beautiful five-star resorts where people come for. where people come for a week to, to their thing, for the Europe or wherever else, right? Conversation for another day on that. Are we going to limit it to those two sheets, right there, on both of these? And that's okay, because that's plenty to work with, right? And now, with all that you're doing, and I'm speaking to staff and my governance team, who, if I had to do some sort of comparison with you and other council members from other of my client cities, you probably spend more hours in your elected capacity than a lot of my other governance teams because of the active constituency that we talked about over here as a strength, right? And then the other components, which are on there that I don't want to repeat a lot anymore. But they're there, and so you are busy. So I know you're all working hard, with all that in mind though, and all that we're dealing with right now, there are opportunities that exist, right? And, and let's hear what they are, let's do this one together, we can do this one together, not council and, and then staff, let's do it all together. What are the opportunities out there for Malibu? Right, in our future, when I say out there, what's there for us?
Well, I think, to go back to what Steve had mentioned, we have an opportunity to restructure 20% of the residences in Malibu.
And the opportunity to restructure them would be to do what?
Rebuild.
To rebuild them within the character of Malibu, is that what you're saying?
Safer, within the character, I mean, all this stuff that you got to think of. All, all the things that impact us here in Malibu, or whatever we're building, should be having it, be able to, be able to think about that stuff.
Rebuild them, a safer Malibu.
So beyond what the building code and what our, our zoning code requires, what additional above that do we want to see incorporated?
Well, I, I just, just, you know, we took it as, Richard and I, rebuild a safer Malibu. How we build the houses, what we do, right? Because that's all out there, I know Palisades is striving for a lot of that as well.
It's not just safer, let me expand on this one.
Please.
If you were doing a brand-new city in, say, Orange County, you'd have a planned development, and you'd be able to say, this is how, why we want the roads to be, this is what we want the electricity to be. You'd be able to look at it and say, this is what a modern city is, going back to what I said, one of the weaknesses is we're a cobbled-together water system. So now, what we have is an opportunity, we're not going to be able to change the water system necessarily, but what you do have an opportunity is to realize what you want it to look like. Safer is just one aspect, it might be safer, it might be a more accessible, it might be a more sustainable. You know, you've got an opportunity to replace 20% of the residences in the city. That's something we wanted to do, but we have an opportunity to do it better than what we had before. In a plan.
Yeah.
I mean, are you just talking about big now?
Which is hard, because you're trying to, you know, do all that you can, I know, to support the rebuilding process, streamline it, reduce or eliminate fees, et cetera, and at the same time, you want something that is modern, safer, accessible, and within the parameters of what Malibu we want to be, right?
And I'll give you an example, you know, we're putting undergrounding in for utilities. Typical planned development feature.
Yeah.
That Malibu, had we not had the fire, we would never have done, or probably wouldn't have been done soon. But here's an opportunity for us to, you know, not turn this into Irvine, but an opportunity to make sure that we're, I won't call it state-of-the-art, but well-fought.
Yeah. Now, funny, I look at a development of about the same population of Malibu, and it's just one development. It's a master plan, the community, basically lots of neighborhoods from different builders, but all part of the greater plan, right? And it's built in a forest, so had a lot of hurdles, but then your point is, whatever it is, this is an opportunity for us to make it what we want and what's best long-term for Malibu.
Go with the vision statement.
Okay, very good, I like that.
Yeah, along those lines, I think we have an opportunity to build a disaster-resilient, sustainable economy for the future here. I mean, in all the things that you're talking about, when we talk about fire-safe communities, we spoke about that this morning, we have the opportunity to implement that. We have the opportunity to work with LA County, we have the opportunity to work with the state. It's a unique moment in time where a number of other municipalities were impacted, and so economies of scale in that sense. We have an opportunity to rebuild along with our regional partners in building a more resilient Malibu.
Disaster-resilient, sustainable community, very good, I'm in, I'm in, Candace.
Experiment related to that is the, the opportunity for funding that's out there, because these disasters have created such a, like, oh my gosh, this is terrible. There's money, you know, coming from federal and state agencies that wasn't there before, and we kind of have the spotlight of the, the need to help us do what she's talking about. So we're working on that, but it's definitely an opportunity, and it won't last more than a couple of years.
That is a very big word, thank you for that. Harnessing those funds in the moment, striking while the iron is hot, right?
Well, taking advantage of the window of sympathy.
Yes, yes, that is a nice phrase, because that's what it is, that window of sympathy. That, that Malibu doesn't always get.
That's right.
So let's, let's take advantage there on that.
As part of what Susan said, looking at our park system, there is also funding available to help, like, harden our parks. So we're looking to just get those opportunities to put up like, instead of wooden benches, we're putting in concrete benches that'll, you know, sustain disasters, so.
Is that just a term I'm not familiar with, or an industry term, did you say harden our parks?
Harden, yeah, just putting in steel fences instead of formal fencing or.
Gotcha, so it has more permanent impact to it and its resilience, right, sort of thing?
For red fires, less flammable materials or.
So that, there's funding out there for that, that we need to see if we can harness as well?
Yes, that's what we're.
Find our way, please.
Improve our efficiency through technology and looking at different ways we could use different programs or technology or even AI to improve our.
I normally don't do this, but I wanted to, right now, raise your hand if you support that statement. Yes, yes, that's, that's an opportunity for us going forward, right? In implementing technologies for greater efficiencies and honestly leveraging ourselves to be able to then use resources of time for other things, right? Marvelous, marvelous opportunity.
It's almost a necessity.
Necessity, yeah.
Yeah.
Just to add something to it, you know, one of the things you run into in business is you look at your operations or your infrastructure, and they all have an end of life, just as computer systems. And if you are at that end of life, it's an opportunity to jumpstart to the future. You look at, take for instance, just the sound system and video we have in this, this room right here, is that end of life. And we have a lot of things that we are getting close to that point, and this is an opportunity for us to take advantage of that by getting the state-of-the-art without having to throw good stuff out, it's just time.
Very good, so it's, it's along those lines, right? The opportunity to improve our efficiency through technology, and I guess it's a separate one, Doug, which is to update, what's the word I'm looking for?
Well, I, I think like one thing that I, I mean, I'm, it's manage our assets and be, be in a little bit of efficiency and have more technology to manage our assets. I mean, Doug mentioned, you know, the lighting and the technology.
Optimize our assets.
Right, and, and so, kind of with that. Yeah, there you go, yeah, with that, with, with technology and, and different programs in place, you can manage that. You can manage how quickly or what's the lifespan on that and when you can do that, and you can plan for that. I said, without that, you're just, you're just too catch-up if you're doing, if you're not.
I think it's great, I think it's great to fix it.
Yeah, you're being reactive instead of proactive.
Yeah, no, I, when that happens, I have a small city up in, in one of my Central Valley areas where they don't have to wake up and earn hours in a day of certain things, because they can do it all remotely from their phones and other things and fix it, right? So no one's going out in the cold or anything else, but that'd be great efficiency, not having our home call people, having to go out to fix it when they can fix it, so. Other opportunities, please, a lot of.
Economic development, I think that brings a great point for an opportunity. That was something that the city really never concentrated on. I'm not talking about economic development in a way that we ask every business to come in, but what those are essential services that the community really needs are missing, or, or those businesses that we can entice to come to the city, so the residents can take advantage of those services.
So economic development within our vision for what Malibu is, right?
Within that, not to change that, but what are those essential services and businesses that can help the community be, have all the needs?
Why don't you buy some underwear here in Malibu?
Bruce and I, Bruce and I would say, you know, Malibu needs more law firms. So, but underwear, definitely, Steve, thank you. So that's a great suggestion, what, when, what, this is rhetorical, because we're not answering questions or drilling down, but what, what has been our plan for enticing and doing economic development for areas that are missing, right? For gaps that we have. I know I can get a nice lobster roll in town in a couple of places, so that's not an issue, right? I know that I can fill in the blanks, but there's some things that will fit within the scope of who we are that we can do. It's a marvelous suggestion that, given the nature of who we are, we don't always list. Thank you.
I think it's a great time for opportunities to get even more specific. So like, we know we have PSPS coming, so we can then start thinking about like resident hubs, supporting them with real, like, the education aspects, so instead of, you know, we're very aspirational, but we could also come down to maybe giving dry ice and using these as opportunities to strengthen our relationships with the residents and partnering with them, public sizing, you know, these locations for where they can charge their devices, or their breast pumps, which is something that I ran into. At their last PSPS, they were doing it at the supermarkets. So instead, we can have a centralized location and use these as more opportunities for stuff like that. Having more places for them to go.
Yeah, given your location, it'd probably be a good recharge spot for a number of electric vehicles. I know if I had a Tesla, I could go over to the, what's the oyster bar place?
The oyster bar.
The oyster bar, yeah. While I'm eating that lobster, well, I could recharge my Tesla.
But I think, I mean, to, to go on that is, you know, what we found in the Franklin and the Palisades fire, when we had the power outages and other power outages, people were going to the grocery stores, they didn't necessarily know about community spaces or even having community spaces created, that they knew that they could not only be able to recharge their phones and other appliances that are necessary, but they can also get information about what may be going on. So that combination of basically a community center and knowing that, you know, and, and how to get that out. Because I know that we do have those facilities, but it doesn't always get communicated. And so, meeting our residents where they're at, but at the same time, having them know that, okay, if something happens, this is my first stop that I go to, because this is where I know the community matters.
So is the opportunity to create those or to advertise we already have them? I didn't quite catch that.
Both, I think we need to do both things.
Okay.
And I think we have an opportunity now to, you know, we have scars, we have burn scars. We can actively work to keep those scars down, so that's a very clear opportunity that will help save our neighborhoods in the future, as long as we're actively, because weeds grow, brush comes back.
So, so is it maintain or control those?
Scars.
Scars?
Yeah.
Well, it's. Open land?
Fire, fire and land management.
Fire and land management, opportunity for us to maintain and improve fire and land management.
So, this is a little bit of a political third rail, but I mean, given that a lot of people are not going to be able to rebuild for financial reasons among others, there's an amazing opportunity to actually have more open space, both on the land and more importantly, on the beach, but it's not being pursued by anybody.
Well, I mean, I think that's what the motion that the county put forward is for some of that land. That as, actually is one of the cornerstones in that, is the land banking option.
Yeah, but I'm not sure it's really for the purpose of putting it away for public trust.
This isn't about, that's for Richard, opportunity to have, to maintain more open space.
Denser it all.
Yeah, I mean, if you read, it says to bank, to bank the land, but then resell it, I mean, make it available.
Where those properties are appropriate to.
There was, in the county documents, there was something that said they, you know, they had an opportunity to buy land, but, but, sorry, remember, there was some language that it said they bought it in terms of being able to resell it if they had to to somebody else or to developers or.
It's so discretionary, right?
Right, and that's why it's so important for our city to be involved in that, so that we can make those decisions within our community.
Well, this, this elective group right here has to have the voice and that represented the people. I mean, if not you, then who? Right, Candace?
I think there's an opportunity to galvanize the community around creating what is more private entities. We have those public-private entities, when you look at what's happening in the Palisades, there's, you know, great formation of private, of private entities to help with their rebuilding recovery efforts. So Steadfast LA, you know, Fire Aid, the Palisades Recovery Group, all of that. Our community would like to be able to, you know, assist the city in coming back from this latest disaster.
Yes.
Yet, they just would like some direction on how can we create an outside, you know, agency to be able to fund that and really help with city efforts, and also at the same time, have the community understand that your government can't do everything for you, that, you know, your community actually is a partner as well, and that we can work together in a public-private partnership fashion. So I think there's an opportunity to galvanize the public around that idea, because it's happening in Altadena, it's happening in Pacific Springs, but has it happened in full strength here in Malibu?
Yeah, I read some interesting parts of Altadena's efforts over there, yeah. I think Richard captured your statement there. So that opportunity is real, and, and, you know, a lot of the things that we're putting up here, I think it's important to have the little asterisk by one of them, there are opportunities, and the windows are shorts. Is that the right adjective? The windows aren't open for a long time, right, on those, so it's important. Any other opportunities jumping out in your brain?
I think for me with the general plan, right, 1991 it was written, and do we need to do more outreach? So that community, new members that are now joining the community, they understand what, what are, what are our regulations? What is the vision? And so this goes to the vision and mission, a, a more concentrated and focused, and focus on that. A marketing strategy that will, that will let everybody know, this is our vision, this is your general plan, this is how we intend that the next 10 years, 20 years, that this is going to be functioning. But not forgetting about the infrastructure also.
So, so in a sentence, is it revisit our general plan, re, I don't know if revises the word.
That, right, but it, what we have.
Your problem.
Actually publicize it, not a lot of people know, know about it. So the marketing of, of that document and the sharing of that information that has never been done, there needs to be that.
General plan hyphen market.
Marketing, outreach, publicize.
Lean into it, I thought that was a great way to say it.
Lean into it.
Right in the community, you know, what, I mean, I've, I've done three ballot missions in that. What I've learned is people come home at night, they go behind their gate, they lock their doors, and they have no idea what's going on in the city. There's a huge, I mean, if you ask 90% of the people in Malibu who's on the city council, they couldn't answer that question for you.
They all know you, Steve.
No, they don't, okay. You know, so this process of, of educating the community and what we're trying to do, because they don't know.
So, yeah, that's a separate one. Opportunity to educate that constituency on.
All the efforts that are going on.
Educate the constituency.
I mean, we learned, I learned something from last city council meeting where it, they were proposing this plan for the supervisor, and residents came in knowing that there was something else that they, they were all, they thought we were doing, we were the greatest thing to vanilla ice cream, right? And I think that's, the more we let them know what we're doing and what. And I think that's, the more we let them know what we're doing and what some of the other folks are getting, I think the better off we're going to be.
So really seizing that, that one pillar of the governor's team coupled with this leadership team of being out there communicating what we're doing, why we're doing it, where it's happening.
And to that point, I think there's been a lot of mistrust in the city with regards to, like, we don't, we have a lot of residents that lock themselves behind the gate and don't know, but then we have a lot of residents that are vocal that do know and then there's some mistrust there that's been festering. And it's almost like how to change that in some ways, because I think they've been here for a very long time, they've seen a lot of these sorts of ideas and the buy-in and then maybe they see that nothing happens. Or we've, we've had these lofty goals and then nothing really comes of it because of this, that, or because of a fire or a disaster. So it would be good to try to get some of that.
Well, I think going on that whole educate and that and everything else, I think there's a real vacuum out in the community. You know, people have an idea of what City Hall is and if they don't have to come here, they don't want to and they're scared to come in here in some ways. And then once they walk in the doors, they're like, oh my gosh, everybody's so nice. Oh, I didn't know this existed. I didn't know, I didn't know this was occurring or, or how I could get involved in this or that or the other thing. So that there is, there's one group of, of the community that just is afraid of the city and doesn't know all the positive things the city is doing.
On this opportunity of educate the constituency about city initiatives through enhanced communication, right underneath that, we could also then put dispelling the myths of City Hall, right, kind of thing. I think most people could live in the community here and when I say most, I mean like more than 50% easily live their whole lives here, never set foot in this building and be just fine, right? That's just a truism. And honestly, that's actually a benefit to a lot of people who actually work in the building, right? Because people can handle things on their own, they can get through things online and there's less work and so there's that element. But for the people who need you as their public service, it'd be good to dispel the myth so they can come in and say, hey, Yolanda is a dragon lady.
I think that was established a long time.
Yeah, all right. What other opportunities do we have during this time in Malibu's history?
There's just so many. We can get really specific, like we have the city-owned properties. So we study, I find the city studies a lot of, we do a lot of studying and we do a lot of like consulting and studying and we do a lot of outreach and then nothing, sometimes nothing happens and then therefore that kind of feeds into this notion. And again, we have disasters, so people seem to forget that part and we're always reacting. But people, I think residents see money spent on studying things. Like I just came across a study that we did years and years ago, Suzanne Gilvin sent it to me about neighborhood character with a cross creek, but it wasn't really, nothing came of it. So I think what happens, we do studies and then there's.
You mean the specific one for?
Yeah, like cross creek center. Years ago, I don't know, it was, I was, I have wrote something about neighborhood character because without it being like clearer, we kind of keep bumping up into this issue of what his idea of neighborhood character is versus his. So we do a lot of outreach, we do a lot of studying and then sometimes things kind of don't happen, so people get frustrated with that.
That is frustrating. It's like taking a survey but not telling anyone the results of it, you know, kind of thing. It can be frustrating. So the opportunity is to be more active to?
I think maybe take it from the intention of not just doing a study, but do the study in order to be able to act on those results of that study.
Have the action.
So, that, yeah.
It comes to an ending of some sort.
Right. So last year we did the community lands, we found out what the community wanted, now we need to take that next step and act on it. If we don't, then we're kind of setting up that same.
Right. Right. What I worry about is then five years go down line, we do the study again and I get Ryan sending me the study that we did five years ago going, we did this already and I go, but we've had two fires.
Or we keep asking for your input and then we never act on it.
That's right. So there's this kind of circular self-defeat.
We got it.
Bruce?
Moving on to a different issue, I think we have an opportunity to hire an entire senior executive team right now.
Yeah, that's a great opportunity.
Well, I mean, we, we have to do it, but it's an opportunity to do it really well.
Oh, okay. So we're talking city manager, I was going to say.
No, no. I consider this.
City manager and the city manager's office, right?
Yeah, yeah. I don't mean to say that the directors aren't senior, but the senior management's like the CEO, the CFO.
We're typically referred to as the executive.
The executive team, okay.
I think you're not calling me old.
Now, I know there are more opportunities, if you want, we can continue. For the interest of time, here's what I still want us to cover. There's the threats, right, the last part of the analysis. Then I want to ask you bigger picture stuff about with all this in mind, what can we do to be more proactive? We know, I don't think anyone disagrees in this room, I saw your dad bring it when this one, brought this up about how reactive we have been or someone arguing have had to be, but that predates the fire. My experience with Malibu and what you've shared with me in the past is we've been pretty reactive for a long time rather than proactive. So I would like to get to that, so let's pivot over to threats and then we'll do that. While you're thinking about that, threats.
Threats like environmental?
What's that?
Environmental threats?
Period, threats. Economic threats, regulatory threats, social threats.
So many.
All right, the first one is it's going to be density mandates from the state. And I'll give you one that's happening right now, the governor's going to sign tomorrow a waiver or a change in CEQA so that it no longer applies to infill construction that has high density to it. And that's aimed at any place you, an urban infill. And we fit that category, for instance, like at Big Rock or somewhere a place in Malibu West. And things like that are a threat, the housing element and so forth. But density mandates from state. The second thing that I want to mention and.
That's a big one.
Let me say.
It's a huge one.
From a standpoint of our emergency response, you look at how we responded to Woolsey versus what we did on Franklin and Palisades.
Yeah.
All the difference in the world. But I think you guys have come up or working on an after-action review of how we handled it. The one thing I'll tell you from having been involved in EOC, we need to, we absolutely have to have a way to communicate with our public during disasters. And we've talked about some things like.
Communication.
Wix radio system, Alert FM, or something else where we, and using the example Mary Ann had about the, or Halon had about telling people where you can recharge your phone and so forth. This is a one-way disaster communication system. We've got to be able to talk to the public in real time and even when the power's out. So that is a critical item to have. We don't get anything, for me, if we don't fix anything after the Palisades fire except that, that will be a success.
Very good. But there was a, you kind of had one mixed in with those two and that is when you referred over here to the development of a post-mortem emergency response plan. Is that a threat? Do we have adequate emergency response situation now, we feel?
I would tell you from my standpoint, I thought we did a lot better, but you can always do it better and.
I think there's going to be opportunities in that one.
Yeah, but you, you look at the other cities in the area, the cog cities, they all looked at us after that fire because we were in many of their places and they all said, wow. I think we were the example to many of them, so we can do it better.
Let me give all of them a pat on the back right there on that one, but should we put on there threats, disaster response, or is that not?
I don't think it's a threat.
Yeah, I mean, I almost feel like the threat is just the loss of the communication infrastructure is always there, like the cell sour, you know, cell and like, which is why we have the communication problem. The threat is the telecoms going down, you know.
The issue is the telecoms go down. Our threat is we don't have a communication system to fill in for that.
Okay, what to do with that, Bruce?
So, these, what we're talking about so far are parts of what I'm going to say and this is going to sound more dramatic than, maybe not, extinction. And what I mean by that is.
That's dramatic.
Well, what I mean by that though is we're a small rural enclave on the edge of the second largest city in the country. We're on a coast that has increasingly, increasingly less areas like this, very, very, very few. And it's just inconsistent with what society is seeking to accomplish these days. So we're fighting a losing battle and I don't know if there's a way to turn it around or not, but that, we may not be Malibu in 10 years or 20 years.
Put that in a sentence.
Extinction.
Extinction.
Meaning that we'll, we'll be overtaken and turned into an urban enclave.
We wouldn't have the problems we have if we were Manhattan Beach. We'd have different problems, but we wouldn't have the problems we have because we have a giant urban infrastructure. And we'd be more concrete, less fires and all kinds of benefits of the kinds of things we're talking about, but we wouldn't be Malibu.
Sure.
And all the things we're pushing to accomplish are pushing us towards Manhattan Beach.
Well, I would just like to understand more, is that because what we're discussing would concrete our mountains? Like what, what pushes us towards?
Every single thing we're seeking that we say we need to accomplish, and I'm not saying we don't need to accomplish it, is a step towards urbanization.
Fire-eroding parks infrastructure?
Unless you're going to just make a bunch of clear space, yes.
Nobody's coming into Malibu saying, let me buy some open space for the city. They're coming into Malibu saying, I want to build more development, I want, I want to create bigger houses, I want to create, that.
So all the row houses.
It's all this stuff, it's all this moving toward more what the, an urban community looks like.
But that's what I lean into our general plan.
There's just a drive to do that, that's, it's money.
But still, I mean, that is the threat. I would say loss of, you know, Malibu, right, kind of thing.
That's definitely a threat.
That's what it is.
Maybe a loss of.
Candace, what were you, sorry, Cassie.
Insecure water supply.
Insecure water supply.
Yeah.
So, so Cassie, and then over here.
Oh, I was just going to say maybe loss of rural character rather than Malibu.
Okay.
What was Candace's, sorry?
Loss of rural, same one you were on, loss of rural character. So she's, yeah, two are really, that's fine.
You captured it.
The steady increase of cost of stuff and things.
To like to operate the city?
Just, just in general, everything. I mean, everything's going up quick to where it's, it's becoming, things are a lot more expensive now and steadily going faster, quicker than you would normally see.
Sorry.
All right, so. Insecure water supply.
Well, the cost of.
Cost of goods.
Doing, yeah, goods and services have gone up, one because of our rural nature, because we are further out, that we, if we are planning on doing anything, it's automatically got a surge charge on it just because of our location.
That's, that's not what I, it's, that's inherent, that's, that's going to happen. I'm just talking in general, everything has gotten a lot more expensive besides that, that effect. Yeah, our, our location makes, makes our costs go up to this level, but the way things are moving up, it's even going up higher. It's, it's, things are a lot more expensive to build and to, you know, to put together.
Does that capture increased cost of goods and services?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Or improvements, yeah.
I would say threats to traditional federal funding and reimbursement.
So that's a political one, really.
Unfunded mandate.
Sort of the current administration, yeah. Threats of revenue sources, funding from federal.
And state.
And state, thank you. University of California is really filling that right now as well. So funding sources at state and federal levels for sure, that's, that is a real threat because we don't know what's going to happen. Let's say it changes in three years, you know, is it all going to come back up to where it was? It's, you don't know, you don't know, but it's there for a bit.
Yeah, relating to that, like, I mean, with the potential of FEMA going away, how this will work in the future and the threat I keep thinking about is we still are very vulnerable to earthquakes. We have a fault line running all along PCH, it's an active fault. We've had more earthquakes in the last few years than we've ever had. I just feel like we're always so focused on fire that we're getting, earthquakes going to sneak up behind us and what we have going on on PCH on Monday.
Looking at my watch, I think I've got to go now.
Yeah. No, I mean, if we have an earthquake on the Malibu fault, like a 6.5 that we could have, that's not going to be good.
That is devastating.
We're going to have a tsunami.
Yeah, the tsunami impact is there.
We're not as vulnerable to tsunami.
I don't think we're vulnerable.
Oh, tsunami's happening.
But, I mean, knowing that's this real threat, I wonder, like, what is our, I know we're doing the evacuation plan, but is there a plan for that?
So, threats, right? We already said, we haven't put down disasters yet, have we? We did over here, but not here, so disasters, we'll leave the word natural off because it could be any kind of disaster, I was going to catch, earthquakes, et cetera.
Well, yeah, if it's on the Malibu fault, then.
It's another, another bit of work we've created for you to answer your question. Do we have a plan, you know, whatnot? More work to be had here with all this work we're doing now, right?
Well, I'm just, are we, we're going to get to solutions, right? Because we're, we have a half hour left and I just need solutions, so I'm going to go home and.
This is not, it's not really about solutions today. Here's, here's what happens when Jerry shows up and feels like. I start conversations that you need to continue after I leave.
We've all thought of all of this. I think, I just like to think about.
Solutions and then there's all.
This is all I dream about.
Candace, let's say Candace up.
This is what is meant to address.
When do we get to talk about that?
This is about, this is about projects that are implementable.
Okay.
To provide solutions, okay?
Do we get details, like, when do we talk about this?
Candace and Richard pointed out to me, given the two hours we have today then, we can have another meeting to talk about what comes down. We've done the, we'll do the SWOT, we'll talk about a larger philosophical thing about proactivity and what you want to see in that and then at the next meeting, we can talk about some of those elements. And Richard's so good at writing and I'm sure he can do what the little thing I'm doing today, so you won't need me to worry about scheduling, you can do this definitely without me. But that meeting has to happen. I want to, don't want to leave your point so that we can work through that. But that's the whole point of all of this strategic planning is to allow the executive team to know how to strategically prioritize, right, Candace, what needs to happen. That's the whole point of that. So anything else on the threats? Seems like it's the smallest one and it should be bigger.
Do you think aging population, like not any maintenance here is a threat?
Yeah, we're putting it down, right, aging population. Are you talking about constituency, are you talking about the workforce, are you talking about our employment group? What are we talking about in your mind?
The community.
The community.
Malibu's becoming retarded.
Well, it's, it's been there a long time, hasn't it, Steve?
It's getting worse.
Because we're visiting that group.
Yeah, you're right, you know.
I think a real threat is not getting leadership, like, you guys are awesome, but, you know, real, like, sustained leadership from the executive level is a huge threat because, you know, besides you guys.
Recruitment and retention.
Three positions and, and therefore, I mean, is that housing? Is that, like, the solution? So each one of these has to have some sort of solution first, right?
Yes.
Right? Which then becomes top priorities because without the staff, God bless all of you, we are, we are kind of nothing, right? You guys are like the implementers of the vision of everything. But I just don't know how to get to from here to there, which is the retention.
If I could just add one thing just on that, so, I don't know if you guys have realized this, but it's become more apparent as we, as I've been writing. The list that we've just established is significant because I think when we asked the question here, it was more reflection of the past, right? And this is more thinking forward, but we're only calling out certain bullets from this list and not others. So if we just think about like the top two here from the past, like what interfered with progress in the past, being understaffed and being overcommitted? Like, how come we didn't list those first over here? Because those are still, those are threats looking forward.
Yeah, that's like where I'm at number nine, which is scary because if we don't get, if we have a high turnover again and again and again, people are always playing catch-up like I've been having to do.
This, this is not sustainable. It's just not sustainable in any organization, private or public. And people, the good people you have and have attracted and retained, they will burn out and they too will find the door, right? So what is it about us that we can do as an opportunity going forward to improve that attracted and retained people?
So, no, it's just, that's a good point, that's, that maybe kind of started thinking. And then right away is what we're doing right now to strategic planning, but setting those priorities and doing it because, you know, throughout the years and coming up, priorities open. priorities always changing, coming up and changing, but having that clear discussion and, and collaboration and talking about it, but then having that clear understanding of what priorities are within us, so, so we're not understaffed. We could, we could, we can take those priorities and, and develop, and develop our staff accordingly to that, and that, so we're not overcommitted when, when things come up. And, and if things, if things come up, that's fine, but able to have that discussion on what priorities need to shift and move around.
And I will add as Vanna here, priority projects, we do have here added personnel and training, so.
Well, I was gonna.
This is, yeah, exactly. This is meant to, this has been great because there are things to maybe add on here, but this is the priority projects as, as we know them to be, and, and it's interesting how doing this aligns with, you know, what, what we developed in, in sense of what priority products are, so. I'm feeling pretty good that it's, it's matching, but there may be areas that we, we missed on here that, that need to be addressed as priority products that you're saying, that give, you know, the personnel, a guide to be able to implement, to address these things. We, we need to know what these priority projects are, and then keep them that way and not let them continually shift and change and, and move, that we're gonna, you know, stick with it. Obviously, things change during the year, but if we could have a, a full set and know that, that you all have approved, like, these priority projects for the organization to focus on, to implement your vision, that this matches your vision, cause it's our job to implement what your vision and policies are, you know.
And just to add to that, as, as, we have, we don't have continuity in council, right? Um, you, we are gonna have an election in a year and a half, and then we'll get two new people, or maybe the same people.
Or the same.
So, or the same. It, it, it's just that continuity on, on the, on council, right? What is the goals that you would like to attain when you are a council member? And concentrate on those, getting your vision, and, and, so I don't, I don't know how we can get to that when there's different priorities and you are also representing different sectors of the public? And so, I think for me, that is a threat.
Oh.
The lack of continuity.
Yeah, yeah, because we're shifting all the time.
So it does come into this one right here, right? Shifting parties, but when we have a three to five-year plan, coming back to my executive here, I mean, we can change things for sure, we can alter things, and then the disruption of public service is real, like a major fire, like an earthquake, thank you for that, and whatever it is, and so it's gonna shift some of those things. But really, we're talking about a three, five, 10-year plan that should be foundationally, right, pretty well established, Yolanda, and then something's trying to shift with a, a new council majority or things like that. But overall, if we have, hey, we need to, you know, one of our priorities is improving the infrastructure of X, Y, Z part of the city, right, then that, that one, I don't think should pivot as much, right, when it comes to those things. If we have the plan, but if we don't have the plan, it's gonna change all the time.
I think for me, I've been here almost six years, and it seems like we never complete a goal. That's, that, it feels to me that way. And, and we are reactive, and we're helping out with rebuilds, we will see fires and COVID, and then still, we have operations and we are completing the regulations and the compliance, but what is the goal of the city? What is the goal of the council? So we can implement it and complete it, like, there needs to be really a target. Okay, this is a timeframe, and it must be completed, instead of, well, now we are understaffed and we have a policy fire. So, I, I just don't know how we get to that.
Yeah, no, that's what we, we need to come out of this meeting, and I will say this, last year, when you were in that meeting that I was in, it wasn't strategic planning, it was going through the priority projects, and you reported on your project, you reported on one that had been completed, those are things you have to feel good about though, right? The ones you complete, but your, your thought is, I want more big picture things, right?
I'd like that too.
And remember what we talked about in our governance team meetings in the fall, and then just slightly reminded yesterday, setting the vision for this city, for whatever period of time we wanna make it, three, five, 10 years, is one of the responsibilities of the governance team, so that our executive team can take that vision, break it down into goals and say, okay, community development, this is you, public works, this is you, parks, this is you, et cetera, and then you have that, then you can set your goals, right? And, and then we work through the projects and we keep drilling down, but that's the objective of everything that I think Candace is shepherding, along with Richard.
Yeah, I, cause on the top it says long-term recovery, I just added resiliency, long-term recovery and resiliency plan. That, that would be important, you know, to address what you're saying, is to have that long-term plan.
Thank you for that, Doug, you know, Steve?
As some of you have heard me say over and over again, you're gonna do a strategic objective, it's three steps you have to take, you gotta have them in order, it's that cash, resources, and allocate the resources, focus. And I wanna go back to what Vanna said the other day when we talked about the budget. For the first time in a long time perhaps, we actually budgeted full funding for staff in all these positions. This is designed to take care of the first two items that are on that list, understaffed and overcommitted. So that the, the resources are now in place to be able to achieve the strategic objectives. And going back to Yolanda's point, one of the reasons why everything is always half-baked is because your, your staff gets pulled somewhere else, and your resources pulled somewhere else. So we are making that kind of a commitment. Yes, we're running at a deficit this coming year, that's for a variety of reasons, and a lot of it is related to the fire. But even in the fire, we decided to fund up and get this done. If you're a, a city that doesn't have any money, going back to a point that Bruce brought up about the treasury, you can't do that. So one of our strengths is we're committing that money to be no longer understaffed and no longer overcommitted, and we know what the focus needs to be.
Very good, appreciate that comment, Steve.
I don't think money is the total solution to our understaffing problem. I think, my perspective is, people who work, they like to see that they're, they've got, they know what they're supposed to do, they can follow a project through, and they get it done, they feel good that they, they've been able to accomplish stuff, and that's what makes people stay. When you jerk them around, when I'm doing this today, and I'm doing something else tomorrow, and someone's saying, you know, and, and they take something new, and someone bitches because they're doing it wrong, I think that's why people leave. They, they don't have a work environment that makes them, that fulfills them, right? I mean, that's, when I worked, I, I felt good, cause I was doing something, and I knew what I, got home at night, I had accomplished something, and, and I think that's what, it's, people are looking for today. So I think if we can come up with this plan and stick with it, I, I think it will help our, our retention problem.
I agree, cause it is gonna take, it is gonna take that, it, what fulfills you, particularly as a public servant, is to see the impact that you're making for others.
Right, exactly.
You know, to be able to see that and feel that, that.
It makes you feel good.
Makes you feel good, and that's, and that's what public service is all about, so we need that, we need that part of our equation.
So people don't go into public service to get rich? No question that the data supports your statement, especially these younger generations that have come into the workforce. Purpose and shared vulnerabilities are more important than a lot of other things, and if they can see they're part of something bigger than themselves, there's a lot of fulfillment in that, even if it's a longer commute or.
I, I can see it.
Bruce.
So, Yolanda's point is well taken about the fact that we, you know, we, we keep shifting the priorities and changing what we're trying to accomplish, and when you do that, you don't accomplish anything. But I, I think that that's inherent in the fact that we don't have, that we have conflicting values, and we don't have a coherent goal. We might today, but the nature of politics, especially in 2020, in the 2020s, you know, look, in fact, I worked in private, private practice for the longest time, and, you know, for a corporation, shareholders come together with one goal, make money. So they, they charge their management team with doing that, they've got whatever they do, and, and, you know, they stay focused on how do we promote this product or this service, and how do we make money? We have a divided, um, population here, and we've got a lot of money that's pour, that pours in, that's trying to accomplish the opposite of our goals, and we've got a lot of people here that want to accomplish the goal. And it's constantly a pendulum that swings back and forth, and if it swings every, every four years, or every six years, or sometimes every two, you cannot stay consistent. It's, it's impossible to do until one side or the other succeeds in accomplishing a steady majority, or they compromise somehow, and, and it's just, that has not happened, and I don't see, I don't see it happening in the immediate future.
Thank you for that context, I appreciate that, and it connects a lot of dots for me on things that we've been talking about, and the challenge of that.
It's so different than the federal government, you know, one administration does some things, then that one comes in and rips it up and starts something different, and then it gets reversed when the pendulum switches back.
But it depends on the paradigm of the White House, right?
Yeah.
I just wanna, I, I support Bruce's point on this from an economic standpoint. You know, if you look at development, and that's really what we're talking about here, you know, here sits this massive area of undevelopment right next to the second largest city in the country. It's the reason why the county in 1960 wanted there to be 330,000 people here. They saw this as an open space to turn into Newport Beach. And, you know, we're sitting here saying, no, and, you know, it's a constant pressure to try and fight it. And that's the reason why I keep saying, we're not trying to defer development, we're trying to avoid development.
Thank you for that, I appreciate it. So in our, our last 10 minutes, I will cover this, if we didn't at least start this dialogue on, as it relates to these two principles here, that, that clearly you budgeted to, to overcome the understaffed and overcommitted. When you have an understaffed group of people who, no matter how talented and hardworking they are, who are committed to so many things, then man hours actually pencil out, right, for them, they're gonna be reacting to everything, they're gonna be on their heels on everything, as opposed to on their toes and anticipating things, right? And that includes the executive team, while Steve and Joe and Alexis were here, and now Candace and Richard, it's just constantly, right, the barrage of things coming in, how, how do we pivot away? How do we shift that paradigm or drop it completely to where we are more proactive? The short answer for me, just because of the short amount of time, is we get this done. We take that budget and we recruit and we fill these seats, and we make it a priority, you know, and that means something else has to give for whoever's doing it. This happens, we get the people here, and then, right, that means though, here's the play, here's the bowl, and it's pouring over with commitments to those very active constituents. One more thing coming in there, and it's gonna pour over, right? Things are gonna start falling through the cracks, if you will, something's gotta give. And so to my governance team, are you comfortable with that idea that something's gotta give in order for our team to be anticipating, anticipatory, which great leaders always are, and, and planning and acting in a, in a forward-thinking manner to address the opportunities list of things here?
You gotta have the intestinal fortitude every now and then to say no. That's what it was, I mean, we rebuilt the company, and we set our goal in the beginning saying, here's what we're gonna do, and everybody in the brother had something else they wanted to do, and we just said, no. We're gonna focus on getting what we wanna get done, and we got it done.
Are all of you on the same page with that? With our, our staff, our executive team saying no to stuff? Are you comfortable that, that hearing that message?
I have no problem.
Now, that, that's not a blank check to just say no to somebody who said, hey, my water's not running, oh, too bad, I got other projects, right? That's not what we're talking about, please, Mary Ann.
So we have an existing strategic plan that was done last September, October, so.
Was this a strategic plan or was it a project, open a project kind of plan?
Well, I, it was, my understanding was both. It was, you know, that we were going to have specific things that the staff was tasked with working on and completing, and some of those things.
I'm gonna turn to our city clerk, Mary Ann, sorry to cut you off, I'm just focusing on our calendar at the time here.
Yeah, it, it was trying to move towards a strategic plan away from a work plan, which is only a project list, so it was kind of in-between step, I don't think the city made it to the point where we have the broad multi-year goals. It was focused more on the short-term projects moving towards broader goals.
Thank you.
What exactly does a strategic plan mean?
It means by 2030, the city of Malibu will have, you know, improved 25% of the infrastructure of so forth, right? By 2025, we will blah, 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 right, and accomplish those things. You don't have it.
I guess I'm, I guess I'm looking for clarification, like with Mary Ann, is because I printed out the strategic work plan 24, 25, that, which are very targeted projects, cause I was told, like, when I had high-level ideas, like technology, I was told, I think by Drew Tony, that bring it to the strategic work plan.
Yes.
Cause in that workshop, we'll be talking about big, big-ticket items, and things will move off of this, which you guys have done a great job, because there are things that I can see have moved off, but then we can move things back on. So when is that gonna happen, that meeting?
So, so this is a precursor to that meeting, right? That has to happen. It, it, we, it's hard to all do in one meeting, you know, kind of the thing, and keep everybody's highest level of attention. In the old days, we used to go off for two days to do a strategic planning session, all day, one day, and half-day the next day. We'll call it the good old days, Bruce, right, when those things happened, but we just don't do that anymore. There's a lot of reasons, and, and location-wise, et cetera, Brown Act compliance, all the rest, right? We just don't do that anymore. So, the goal is to have another meeting like this, where now executive leadership, along with a cabinet meeting with all our director-level people, will come together and say, okay, here's what we're seeing, right, from our, our group, our, our whole leadership team, you know, how do they fit into the grid here of our plan, and what will those priorities be? And what are we looking at here? Within one year, these are realistic, within three years, within five years, 10 years, kind of thing.
Okay, you're describing this.
I'm looking at, at Shore up, and one of them is tracking. There's, there's little tracking that goes on as to the progress of each, of each project. So if there's a project, like, where are we? You know, where are we? Where are we? And, and I know that there's that list, that this is a strict project list, this is not getting at the big problems that, that we're facing in terms of a rebuild and a recovery. It's our, our issues with what has happened after this disaster are bigger than some of these projects that we have. We, we have an opportunity to really look at those and pull them into a larger, how are we going to move forward in this rebuild and recovery period? This is a, a, a different moment in time than this strict project is, because there is funding available. So we have to match that, you know, what those opportunities are to the funding. We, we, like you said, there are areas where we've done a budget, we have great opportunities for bringing in, you know, new staff and stopping this problem of being understaffed and all of that, but it's taking each one of these and matching it and pulling those projects into a, a larger plan. This is a project plan, this is not a larger strategic plan.
That, that's right, if you look at, go look at another city's website, I'm trying to think of one off the top of my head.
I just watched Santa Barbara's meeting.
Okay, so, so their strategic plan for another city, you know, it's not a project list, it has projects in it, but it is a 20-page document with, here's this category, here are the projects in it. Here is the long-term goal, the short-term goal, et cetera, that always stays, Yolanda. What doesn't stay are the projects inside it, right? Cause we complete them, because they get bumped, because of a disaster or something else. But like, this one has to be in there, I would think, right, just hypothetically. You know, as we're looking at that communication system where we have it for our people to make that work. But it is a bigger document that incorporates what Candace has handed out today, right? So it's, it's a much bigger thing, and, and once we have it, the first time you build it, it, it's quite arduous as far as the time and energy goes, but once we have the structure of it, it's much easier to update, it really is, Steve.
Yeah, let me, you know, in, in business world, we used to have project managers, all right? Who basically track what was coming, you know, they, here's what you're supposed to do, they come and talk to you, are you on track? And being able to take that kind of information and pass it out to the public that says, look at the stuff that we're getting done, I think will be a big benefit for the city.
And I think your point before I get to, hey, is, we, we just haven't had that structure where that old management maxim, well, gets measured, gets done, right? And that accountability that that builds in, we need that.
Well, yeah, and actually, I put that on my list, which is maybe a dashboard, so that it's public-facing, so that there is a way in which council members, I could just say, oh, we're in phase two, I, we're in, you know, whatever it is, but it's a little bit more detailed than this, so that, like, we can understand the. so that, like, we can understand the minutia and nuances of the project. So, you know, incorporate.
Yeah, that's a double-edged sword sometimes, having that available to the public. But as long as it's the right stuff in there, it's easily found.
Right, so a huge thing is where are we in fire? I know fire-hardening, fire-wise, I was hoping this would come up because it's, I get, we get emails about it. What are we doing in our hillsides? Meaning, so if we have some sort of information that we can disseminate to the public, it would take the anxiety down instead of being angry at us, saying, what are you doing for us? You're the government. We're home-hardening, we're zone zero.
You do recognize, hey, that there's always going to be people angry at you.
I don't mind, but I also will learn as well, so I'm also a little bit like.
Our measure of success is that, hey, nobody's angry at me right now. Because that's never going to happen.
But we can always do better, right? And so the fact is, is that we, I see these little points of very big, big problems in Malibu, which is, I've home-hardened, I'm zone zero, I've done this, I'm a fire-wise community. Now what's going on in the city?
Understood.
What, you know, and that sort of transparency, so it's not on next door.
There's a fishy.
It was Richard's desk and then whatever.
Yeah, just for consideration, so I think Candace and I have been working here together for about six weeks. Is that right? So when we got here six weeks ago, there was no project list. But there were lots of requests to go to meetings and read emails. So reading emails and going to meetings were the priority. And the meetings were quite extensive because there's lots of committees, there's lots of commissions, there's lots of agendas that have been prepared, logistics of hosting. All of that had essentially consumed the last leadership team. And we don't want that to happen again. So we're trying to rebuild with a different approach that has a chance at success based in best practices of what a lot of other cities do.
And come through, just there, that just, it's a model of how things work. And get done, you know? I mean, the idea is that you want to, you need a roadmap, you know? Anyplace you go, and you got, you know, now you can go Google, but I mean, you gotta have a roadmap and know where you're headed. And that's a bigger thing. And you build it and you, you know, you get from macro to micro. We need to get a macro first because that wasn't in existence. It was this, this, this project, this pulling here, this person wants this, this person, this person's mad about this, this person's mad about that. Oh my God, there's a fire. Oh God, it's another fire, help! You know, I mean, and everybody's veered off the roadmap. I mean, we just, we need, the city, we have an opportunity right now. This is unique in time to rebuild and have the city recover. But you have to have a larger roadmap and bring it back down to the micro of what those projects are. So that it lasts through every council, every executive iteration, so the organization is not confused with these leadership changes, is not confused with the new council. You know, it keeps moving.
Is this not the project list? Because I don't understand.
This is not the project list. This is what we're talking about doing.
Well, this is the project list that I was told when I first got on council, is the project list.
That is the project list. That is, projects go inside, like for instance, you were just talking about wildfire. That's on here, wildfire prevention and disaster program as well as disaster resiliency.
I think where I'm confused, I don't know.
Pretty confused.
The 2425 project list?
Yeah. It has those different things, maintaining rural character, workplace culture, you know, public safety, the priorities of the city at that moment in time last year. Obviously, the fire came and it had a major disruption coupled with the major executive management team changeover. So is this more of a communication that?
So for me?
One doesn't know the existence of the other?
Just because of time, Mary Ann.
Yeah, no, it's fine, I understand.
When I view your 2425 list as, it is a micro list sprinkled with macro seasoning, right? We need a bigger picture, right, of what it is. And it'll help when, by the way, six weeks, well done, just getting to the starting point. Because in order for us to get to where we're going, we have to know where we're starting from. So I applaud you. Very well done in six weeks. But that's the goal here, is to say, okay, we take this now, coupled with that, see what we fit in, and then we come back to the group and talk about, okay, what are our things, right? We start to do some implementing. So the next steps, the executive team, along with senior management, are going to have to get together, have a meeting and talk about these, see where they fit in. And they come back to you and say, what is your preference, right? What is your vision for this on all these? And it will encompass the old list, Mary Ann.
Yeah, I mean, I think that has to be the starting point.
It will encompass the old list into the bigger plan that we're talking about.
And what's been accomplished on that.
Yes.
I know, the old list is gonna go, it goes inside a larger plan. It's already part of this.
I'm sorry, I'm just confused right now. I'm not seeing the difference between this and that. So it's not, this can grow.
It's maybe how it's laid out.
Not how it's laid out.
And trying to communicate it.
That's okay.
We're just saying, we're just saying, can we have a strategic plan and that it's larger? And that those products are, they're all inside of this. They are, they're being implemented, they're happening. But it's just how this is being communicated. It's not communicated well in this organization, I can tell you. I mean, me just being here six weeks, I mean, we've had to try to, you know, get information from here, there. The institutional knowledge is not really available. So we are trying our best. If you don't like it.
No, you're doing it.
I understand.
That's not my issue with it.
No, one of the things, I want to be clear, is my time is right now, is probably we need to get this in some form. I know you were taking a lot of copious notes there. And the next natural step, if we had, you know, the rest of the day to work on it, we would ask each of you to put what you think are the priorities on these things. So we can do that, right? The stars, if you will, you know, where you put your gold star, where you put your green star, et cetera. And we would figure that out. But we probably have to do that maybe, if not in the meeting, online somehow. You guys decide how you want to do that, to get everybody's input.
I think what Candace said, every business, every project that I've been involved in that's been successful, we have a vision of what we're gonna be when we grow up.
That's it.
I mean, and with that in place, everybody can understand. If you can create that vision and make it so people can understand it, you got a much greater chance to pull it off.
Well, they're gonna buy into it. So they're gonna follow, yeah. Anyway, my time's up, you guys, a lot of good work in there, thank you for that. Keep it going, keep the momentum going. And let's build this thing to where it needs to be. Thanks, everybody, appreciate it.
Kelsey, please, maybe to her.
Your penmanship never.